Good morning and welcome to the September 2nd Board Meeting. Supervisor Lou Wiler, we start with the question.
I'd like to lead us to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good morning. I hope everybody made it through August okay. We did have some scares there with the fires and rain, not the fires, lightning and rain, but we did make it. I'm going to start out with an update from US Forest Service regarding matters of interest in Trinity County.
Chair, there, due to other competing interests, they're not able to attend today. But for everybody's awareness, they are having a community meeting tonight at 6:00 PM at the CD Hall here in Weaverville to provide an update on the main two fires in the local area. But this overall community meeting tonight at 6:00 PM at the CD Hall.
Very good, and I guess they are pretty busy getting ready for a possible dry lightning strikes throughout the day from, I think, 2 o'clock this afternoon until 8 o'clock tonight. So let's wish them the best of luck with that. We are going to adopt a proclamation honoring Charlie Holdhouse. I saw you somewhere, Charlie. There you are. How are you? For a service to the people of Rush Creek in Trinity County. A proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of Trinity County honoring Charlie Holdhouse for a service to the people of Rush Creek and Trinity Council to the Trinity County Fire Safe Council as a neighborhood advisor. Whereas in 1999, Trinity County Fire Safe Council was formed as a group of local, state, and federal land management agencies, non-governmental agencies, volunteer fire departments, and citizens to improve the cooperation and coordination of all aspects of wildlife management in Trinity County. Whereas the people, or excuse me, whereas the Trinity County Fire Safe Council has worked closely with each community to develop projects for fuel reduction and community safety on private and public lands. The Trinity County Fire Safe Council has supported 14 communities in their designation as firewise community and promotes action, both big and small, to contribute to wildlife resilient communities. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Trinity County created the Fire Safe Council Award in 2020-24 to award two individuals or groups that emulate the vision and mission of Trinity County Fire Safe Council. Whereas Charlie envisioned a wildlife resilient Rush Creek and advocated for its community needs. Leadership in Forest Health and Community Safety. As a federal health coordinator, as a forest health coordinator for the Trinity County Resource Conservation District in 2019, Charlie began the 2020 Community Wildfire Protection Program update, attending community meetings and later spearheading Neighborhood Ambassador efforts for Rush Creek focusing on fuel reductions to enhance fire safety. Determination of property ownership and collaboration. The persistent engagement with Caltrans from 2021 to 2023. And review of survey maps, Charlie clarified ownership of the county-owned parcel adjacent to Rush Creek Estates, enabling full reduction on both Caltrans and county portions, which Caltrans treated at their right-of-way in April 2023, and the county acknowledged ownership for TCRD work. Successful Neighborhood Ambassador events initiated in May 2023. For the first fuel reduction event Charlie coordinated with TCRCD under a county encroachment permit to treat areas within 75 feet of Rush Creek Drive, followed by the 2024 event completing the county parcel. Both events utilized the community chipping program with Weaverville Fire offering additional fuel reduction support in 2024. Innovative 2025 event and fire prevention impact. In 2025, Charlie organized a fuel reduction event on a private parcel near Rush Creek Road, managing 23 burn piles with a burn permit. This proactive work proved critical when a vehicle fire on June 23, 2025 was contained within 50 feet due to prior removal of the latter fuels. Now, therefore be proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of Trinity County honors the work of Charlie Holdhouse for his leadership and advocacy in fire resilient communities.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Hold one moment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you want to say something or are you just presenting?
Scott, Skyler's here. She's got the plaque that RCD, the Fire Safe Council, already presented to Charlie. She'll take that up as far as the picture and that kind of stuff is the plan.
Thank you for your service.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Hi.
Supervisor Lou Wiler.
Hi.
Supervisor Brownfield.
Hi.
Supervisor Gogan.
Hi.
Yeah, I would just say I remember getting calls to go out and visit the property and was shown around to even explain who owned the property and what work was being done. I do believe there was also some culvert work that needed to be done as you were showing me around. But it was impressive to see that this was, this was going to happen one way or another. And I appreciate the dedication and I also know that you did a ton of the work yourself. So thank you very much.
I'll just briefly add, I had the opportunity this last week to drive a significant amount of Northern California territory. And one of the things, I actually made a phone call during the week to thank our RCD and mentioned the, our firewise communities. It is astounding to me that other communities have not learned the lessons as, as we have so hard. I'm so proud of the work that's been done through the development of the Fire Safe Councils and the firewise communities. It really does stand out. When you travel to other places, you see how good of a job we are, we are embarked on. And I'm just proud of that type of work. So thank you for, for being at the front end of that, sir.
And Charlie, just like, thank you for being President of the Fish and Game Commission for at least a few years there and, and your help with that. Thank you very much. Day 83. Health and Human Services, Behavioral Health Services, award a proclamation which recognizes September as Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month. A proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity recognizing the month of September 2025 as Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month. Whereas the week of September 7th through 13th, 2025, is National Suicide Prevention Week, a time which individuals, organizations, and communities around the country join their voices to amplify the message that suicide can be prevented. And whereas it recognizes that people of all ages benefit from common tenants of wellness such as access to effective health and behavioral health, social support, and a sense of meaning and purpose. Whereas attitudes and perceptions about aging, behavioral health challenges, and suicide have a significant impact on individual wellness and the willingness to reach out for support and services that can alleviate distress. Whereas cultivating and maintaining wellness is a lifelong pursuit. And individuals of all ages can benefit from integrating wellness into the daily routine to prevent or reduce the severity of broader range of health and behavioral health problems. Whereas knowing the signs of suicide, finding the words to talk to someone that may be thinking of suicide, or reaching out to local resources that are, are steps everyone can take to care for themselves and others. Whereas all Californians are urged to play a role in suicide prevention and promote mental health and awareness as we strive towards zero suicides. Whereas September 7th through September 13th is recognized across the United States as Suicide Prevention Week, providing the opportunity to educate and engage everyone in our community to find their role in suicide prevention. Now, therefore be proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity does hereby proclaim the month of September 25, 2025, as Suicide Prevention Month. Be it further proclaimed by all members of the Trinity County Board of Supervisors on this second day of September, that the week of September 7th through September 13th, 25, 25 be declared Suicide Prevention Week, and that day of September 10th be declared a World Suicide Prevention Day, duly passed and adopted the second day of September 2025 by the Board of the County of Trinity. Make a motion.
Thank you for the opportunity to bring awareness to the board and community on matters very global. For part two, September Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, a time to raise and reduce stigma and remind ourselves mental health is essential to this whole health. This topic does not discriminate age, gender, race, or socioeconomic status. Our mountains are beautiful oasis, but they're often lonely as well. Every 40 seconds, someone in the world dies of suicide. It affects families, friends, workplaces, and communities, and yet it's often kept in silence. Suicide is preventable, and prevention starts with awareness. Know the signs, changes in behavior, withdrawing mothers, hopelessness, talking about wanting to die or feeling like worth, be their warning sign.
Start the conversation. Asking is not easy, but it could save a life. Studies show that asking does not actually increase risk. It opens the door to support. Be there. You don't have to fix everything. Just listening without judgment can make someone feel less alone. Connect to help. Encourage them to talk to a counselor, reach out to a doctor, or contact a crisis line. In the U.S., dialing or texting 988 connects you to suicide and crisis lifeline 24/7, free and confidential. Here locally, our Behavioral Health 24/7 Crisis Line is available at 530-623-5708. Let's use September as a reminder to speak up, check in, and support one another. You don't need to be a mental health expert to help. You just need to be a human, present and compassionate. Your voice could be the reason someone chooses to stay. And a special thank you, even in our local community, for all of those on the other side of the crisis lines, our ER, emergency room department, our law enforcement, first responders, that come together to support our community in, in these trials and in these hardships. And I think more than anything, compassion and just being a friend cannot be understated. So, thank you.
Just thank you. No. Go right ahead.
I just want to take the time to speak my personal support into this effort. I thank you, Mrs. Hamilton, Ms. Hamilton, for, for doing everything that your department does and recognizing this. Growing up, I had a significant number of deaths occur between the age of 13 to 21. Most of them were pretty hard deaths. And so during that period of time, death seemed closer than life. And I remember being on both sides of the suicide conversation with friends who couldn't cope with the losses that, that during our teenage time we were experiencing. And I will share a brief story. A friend called and said that he was done. He was going to end his life. And he happened to be in Arcata, and his choice of, of death was going to be to jump from an overpass. And I was probably 16 when this was occurring, and I didn't know what to do. So I just called the Arcata City Police Department and said, my friend has called and he said he was going to do this. Well, every time he climbed to the edge of the overpass, a cop car went by with their lights on. They never did make contact with him, but he called me a few days later and said, you completely destroyed my plan. And I'm partially grateful and partially hate you for it. So it does just take a minute and a little bit of effort. And I just want to say to everybody out there that as an individual human being, you have tremendous value. Each one of us was made in my belief in the image of God. We all are here for a purpose. No one can be you. You're the only one that can be you, and you were designed for a time such as this. So take the time to remember that you have value and that there is no problem greater than love. So seek love out, and I pray that everyone has a chance to be that person if they have to be for somebody. And to never walk away because you really can make a difference in someone's life when you care. So I thank you for the work that you guys do. I will make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second. Supervisor Brownfield.
Hi.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Hi.
Supervisor Lou Wiler.
Hi.
Supervisor Gogan.
Hi.
Public comment. This time is for the information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda or within the consent calendar. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole. To the chair, no actual discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate departments for follow-up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda.
Good morning.
Mr. Hamilton, how are you?
Doing good. For the last 15 years, I've been trying to get somebody to do something with the roof at the bandstand.
What about Bruce?
The roof of the bandstand. The UV levels at 3 are nasty. We've been clear up to 13. Lately, we've been 7. If you look at the roof, it's going away. I have talked to buildings and grounds several times, to different employees. I've talked to supervisors about it. I have talked to CAOs about it. And it's an important structure. It is used for children and other events. You can get grant money to fix it, but somebody needs to act on it. And I've tried to do it behind the scenes, and now I'm doing it in public. So please do something to fix the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public, public comments from in the room?
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Ben Kellogg, Weaverville. First, I'd like to thank Liam for your gas reduction.
Oh, thank you very much.
Really helped light a fire under, under some butts within the gas. But the real reason why I came, and I think it's an important topic and discussion. Last meeting, the discussion after Panos's presentation. And what I and others felt was a dressing down of Supervisor Brownfield during the discussion. Completely unacceptable. She earned her District 5 supervisor spot by the vote of the people of her district. And she has the right to bring up topics and questions when it comes to department heads that are coming in front of the board. And for the three of you to scold her like she was a little child is completely unacceptable. You know, it's, and it seems to be a trend where whenever people question things around here, they're called ill-willed, ill-informed, self-centered, whatever it may be. And it's just not acceptable. You all want us to engage, and then you all do this stuff. I agree with Rick's comment that, you know, the buck does stop with the board. And if the board doesn't give the money, then it's on the board, and it's your guys' fault. When we approve things like, you know, bomb detection equipment, but we don't fund SAR. Or we thank the volunteer fire department for their service, but we don't fund them at all throughout the years. It's an empty thanks, in my opinion. It's taking advantage emotionally, like the, you know, not funding animal shelter but reaching out to TASSA. What, what, what are people going to say? No, we don't want to give you money. Or no, we're the volunteer fire department. Because you're not giving us money, we're going to stop doing things. If you're going to thank people for their service, then back it up beyond words. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in the room? Good morning, Jim.
Morning, Chair, Board, Staff. So I'm Dan Harper from Gettlenpomm. So I asked you to put Xenia Lake Mountain Road on the agenda so we could have a discussion about it, not to get a report from your DOT director. And it was disrespectful, wrong, and rude of the chair to refuse public comment. No one wants to drive six-hour round trip to be treated like that. Then there was another disrespectful display from Carpenter Harris trying to belittle a fellow board member for questioning the DOT director's decisions. During Carpenter Harris's rant, she spoke some truth about how ground moves in our mountains, saying, how dare Supervisor Brownfield expect to have good roads when no matter what you do, it's going to slide out or fall apart right afterward, right after you fix it. So so what was the board and the DOT director thinking when they approved $2.1 million to fix 800 feet of road? The board and/or the DOT director are just throwing money away. The drainage problem that caused that section to need work was brought to the attention of the road department a year before it fell apart. A little maintenance in the county could have saved $2.1 million in 2024. Basically, the DOT director has failed to do his job, or his 40 years of experience is from flatland. Or maybe he's not as qualified as Carpenter Harris thinks he is. Also, in 2021, when FEMA was cleaning up after the August complex fire, they were destroying what was left of the chip seal on Xenia Lake Mountain Road with their equipment from the five-mile to the 16-mile mark. When I asked them about it, they said, the FEMA rep told me that they were going to give Trinity County enough money to repair all fire-damaged roads. And since that road hasn't been repaired, where did that money go? The 5th District doesn't need more money. It just needs someone with common sense to direct the money to the right places. With common sense. So points to consider, one, $2.1 million for 800 feet of road. Makes no sense. Two, where did the FEMA fire damage money go? Three, why do the Weaverville and Hayfork DOT yards spend approximately $8,000 per mile? And Ruth spends almost $24,000 per mile? Why the, why the huge difference? So here's a suggestion to fix the problem. Reopen the Xenia Yard with a three-person crew. With local crews doing maintenance, it will cost the county less money in the end. When the Ruth crew works on our side of the hill, they only get to work four hours per day because of travel time, and they don't even like to work on our side of the hill. My general impression is that they hate working in Gettlenpomm. Just my opinion. You guys have a great day.
Thank you very much. Any other comments in the room? Good morning.
Good morning. Chair Supervisors Lisa Wright-Lewiston. First, a reminder, Thursday, we're having an educational event at Roping, Ropin Rondas in Hayfork regarding how to become licensed in cannabis operations. Everyone's invited. Secondly, I did want to talk about the doubling up of cannabis and planning directors right now. So Director Plobani has done a great job on the cannabis division, but now he's also been tasked with the planning department. I think it might be a good idea to reconsider moving cannabis back under planning. That's where it originally was. I've been involved with this for, you know, 10 years or so as a component, especially because it is agricultural use. It should just roll in as another type of land use over planning. So perhaps a program manager, that would also save on director cost. So something to think about in that regard. Third, there were items that I had requested come before this board that were not brought to the board that I feel are policy decisions. So perhaps CAO can weigh in during his report. But number one, it's the diversion of staff time to do code enforcement, something that used to be under the sheriff. I don't believe that the position was funded for that. That's not good use of our program dollars nor time. Right now, we have a backlog of pending applications, and staff is saying that they've been directed to focus on the compliance matters rather than new applications, which does not support business development and small business in Trinity. Fines, fines have been established for abatements that follow the up to $1,000, but it maxes out. And there's been no ability to negotiate. County Council used to be very effective in resolving the issues. And actually, it's being taken to the point where people are not allowed to continue with their businesses because of these fines. No state agency, no federal agency even, does that type of stopping of your business if you can't pay your back taxes or your fines. No one does. I don't believe that ever came to the board. That's another action from the administrative office. The appeal that's been sitting for now, going on two months, not coming to the board. The appeal that's been sitting for now, going on two months, not coming to the Board, we have no answers as to why that's happening. That is also delaying further business development because a number of pending applications and opportunities for small business development are being held up by that. Why? If it doesn't come to the Board, we don't learn about it, and it's being tightly held at the C A O level, and I don't understand. So perhaps it would be very beneficial for shedding some light on why this isn't coming before the Board. Policy decisions aren't being made at the Board level, but at the administrative office level. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the room?
Good day, good morning.
I didn't come here to say anything today, but I just want to reiterate some observations that I'm making. Vade VanderWijde-Lewiston, as I stand here and I just observe, I came to here to observe because it feels so insulting to watch you all, as a collective, not everybody, but operate and consistently ignore the public requests. You planning commissioners asking for something to be put on the agenda, and it goes ignored. You have people who've been working on policy for our cannabis division for ten-plus years, and everything goes ignored until cannabis pulls in money and you pull that shit right out, and you disperse it everywhere else. There are no answers to the questions that are brought here, and it's insulting, and there's something called cognitive dissonance. That is when actions do not match the words that come out of your mouths. The things that we put in our code and is in put in black and white interpretation when proper intelligence uses everything in between, including how something feels and whether or not patterns come about because of the words spoken. The words spoken from your mouths and that come into code and ordinances don't even make sense half the time. And when we try to make sense of them, everyone comes up with a different idea of what that code means, and it comes down to the in-between, the interpretation, the intention behind what we do here. And what I see up here as a collective are people just sitting and ignoring the very people, we, the people that have put you in these positions. When are you gonna start listening? When are you gonna start answering questions? When are you gonna start looking at your people when they speak to you, Trent? We deserve to be listened to. We pay your paycheck. We're done being insulted. We're done being gaslit. We're done being confused with all of these empty reports that come out of these B O S meetings. Can we just put on the agenda what the people ask for? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? On Zoom?
I show no raised hands.
We will move on to reports and announcements. C A O Tuttle.
Thank you, Chair. Got a few items. First, a thank you from the Trinity Alps Unified School District Superintendent Jamie Green. He and I had a conversation last week, and he would like to express, you know, his appreciation to the community and the Board for any involvement in the school track that has been recently completed. Especially a big thanks to Senator McGuire for his involvement in that project. Jamie did state he plans on opening that track up for community use after school hours and making that a part of the community. So a big thank you from him. In our solid waste department, on the 26th of August, we finally received the actual closers certification for the Weaverville landfill, which has been in the works with different agencies since 2019. So that's a good news story, and Diane and staff are very happy to finally get the official notification. It will help with some of the pretty strenuous and arduous reporting requirements. On August 27th, H E D officially approved the county housing element. So a big thank you to all staff, planning commissioners, and the Board for everyone's work that went into that document and effort. Now we will start to work on the implementation programs that were identified in that housing element, and we once again have a certified and approved housing element in the county. So big thanks to everybody involved with that effort. Environmental Health will be sending out a survey to get input on a potential micro enterprise home kitchen operation program. There'll be more information in the survey. They've been working on it for a little while. It should come out this week. If you get any questions on it or have any issues, just please direct those and work with Environmental Health on that. But just looking for some input on that program. On Friday last week, our H R Director completed the CSAC H R Director Institute course. There were many H R leaders from around the state who participated in the culminating training and event. The graduation, if you will, took place last week, so big thanks and recognition to Leila for the time that she's spent in that professional development training. We have a new planner onboarding today. He's from the North State area, a recent graduate in the planning field, so we're very excited to welcome Alex to the community and county. He is onboarding as of today. As I've stated previously in this meeting and others, the budget book will be publicly available no later than September 8th, and we'll have budget hearings on September 23rd. And if the Board so chooses, I'm happy to talk about code enforcement that was publicly talked about in this meeting in July of 2024, when we moved it from the Sheriff's Office to the Community Development Department. And I'm also happy to talk about, if the Board so directs, when and how the fines and fees are no longer being negotiated at the County Council level, as that was rescinded by the Board, not by the C A O, but by the Board. And I am very happy to talk about the status of the pending appeal that's been brought up in here a few different times, as staff is working through that process, and there are public notices involved with that. But if the full Board wants to talk about any of those, I'm happy to do that at any time, just provide direction, and we will do that. That's all I've got for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Reports from department heads, I see a couple here. No, no. Reports from members of the Board of Supervisors. I will... I'll start first. I've gone out of county travel, but I did spend the last couple of weeks driving throughout Trinity County, speaking to my constituents, making them, all of them, business people, cultivators, people of the public of District Three, and trying to get them prepared for the upcoming community plan meeting, letting them know their message needs to be consistent, they need to show up, and just trying to get them ready for something that will be a permanent issue for, or be permanent for District Three. And if they're gonna speak up, it is time to speak up. I did drive most of the roads that I could in Trinity County, and absolutely, you know, we have some terrible roads, but we don't have a lot of money to fix them. Also, I did take a look at the, if Hyam Palm does slide out this winter, which I think is a probability, looked at that Forest Service road that would be an alternate, would be the only way out, and, you know, it's doable. I think there's gonna be a lot of snow there for a certain amount of months, and the one thing that came to my mind as I drove there was the need for certain health things, prescriptions, one of them, you know. I think everybody from Hyam Palm drives into CVS here and gets their prescriptions. I was just wondering if it's a way we can figure out a way to get those out there to them if they're elderly or cannot get through. And I worry about any medical issues that may come out of that area trying to take that road, especially since I foresee it being closed down some of the time just due to nature. So those are some things I looked at, talked to, and I tried to prepare everybody in my district to come to the community plan, which Douglas City is on the 16th this month, and Hayfork is on the 18th of this month. I'll meet with them all again just prior to the meetings coming up, so that they have full input and, you know, say what they need for their district. And that is all I have. Carpenter Harris, please.
I have no out-of-county to, out-of-county travel to report. I did attend the LAFCO meeting, which was, it was very small. We just had a couple things we needed to approve, which was some budget changes that were necessary. Otherwise, that meeting was very quick and to the point. I did also attend over Zoom the T M C meeting, which was programmatic in nature, just dealing with their standard procedures mostly. And I do want to remind the Post-Mountain community that on September 16th is your community plan meeting. The Hyam Palm community on September 17th is your community planning meeting, and then Junction Cities is on the 18th, and all of those start at 6 P M. So please make sure that if you want to have a voice or a comment, that is the time to come be an active citizen and to speak into the planning around your designated communities. Otherwise, I will be attending my appointed meetings for the rest of the month.
Thank you, Supervisor Brownfield.
So I had Cody Smith from Planning Department up to Mad River, and he did a wonderful presentation on limited density ordinance, the ordinance of that, and the ordinance for the ag structures and tiny homes. So that was a really great informational meeting, and we had a good showing of people. So I think we'll be doing quite a few more of those with the community. I think they're a great way to connect with the department heads. So, and I have been talking with my community a lot. They are concerned about public being able to speak, but, so I won't say anything more about that. But I did go to the LAFCO meeting with Heidi, very short, and we're looking forward to the next LAFCO meeting, which will be very impactful, and we encourage Post-Mountain to be there for that. And we had the Ruth Festival, which turned out to be an amazing festival, where just packed, full of booths and people, and for the first time for a long time, so we are, it's really great to see people out and moving around and enjoying themselves in, at the lake. So, thank you very much. That's it.
Supervisor Rootwire.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I just want to check County Council. So C A O Tuttle offered to address some of the things that have been coming up in public comment. Is it best, is it fine to just say, fine, let's see if we have Board consensus and do that now, or would it be better to agendize that or more of a presentation? I just want to make sure we do it appropriately?
Kind of depends on the subject. If it's a quick answer, then he can address that here, but if you're gonna get into a detailed conversation when you're going back and forth, you should be agendized.
Okay. Well, I guess I would say to C A O Tuttle, do you feel like what you're, your willingness is great, I appreciate it. Did you feel like you could fairly quickly address some of those things and would not turn into a back and forth, or would you think it'd be better to just put it on the agenda?
To me, I think they're very short answers. I mean, code enforcement was moved from the Sheriff's Office to Community Development Department in mid-2024. That was talked about in this meeting. It was done for budgetary purposes. Instead of spending about $5,000 or $500,000 of program funds per year, you know, we're spending less than half of that now, and we're getting the same one person of code enforcement time. It's not a Sheriff's Office deputy. When we need Sheriff's Office deputy support, we have an M O U in place for up to potentially $50,000 a year if we need law enforcement support when we go out on any code enforcement type of operations throughout the county. And that has been put in place. And again, those have all come before the Board. The fines and fees, as far as no more licenses being issued if a property has outstanding fines and fees on them, that issue came before the Board as well, and direction was provided, and we're implementing. As far as the appeal that has been referenced in here a few different times, we do have a appeal from a previous planning commission decision. Staff has been reviewing it. It's not a cut-and-dry decision. The way the planning commission addressed it was, it was supposed to be a general ambiguity determination and not dependent on any particular applicant or application. That's not the way it went, it happened, and everybody's trying to relate it to a specific application up in the, up in North Lake area. So we're working with that applicant, and we're working through that process, and it will be on a future agenda. It's just not ready right now. So it will be on a future agenda, and as soon as it's ready, and staff has had time to put the appropriate time so the Board can understand what the issues are and have enough information to make an appropriate decision, it'll be before the Board. It's not being held up for any particular rhyme or reason, other than there's just some complications associated with it, like there are oftentimes with these appeals. So that's the answers.
Thank you. I have one question. So the one person we have out of the cannabis department, is he going out doing code enforcement against the legalized farmer who may have jumped out of his 10K and exceeded that, or any enforcement?
He goes out and does M M R P, so to make sure that the, any applicant, any licensee is complying with the terms of their license, they do go out and do those as well.
And they do illegal cannabis grows also? No?
If they, if they are made aware of cannabis grows that are not in the program, absolutely. Same process this county's been doing for a number of years with the N O V process. It's no different.
Okay, so now for my update. An economic summit that I've mentioned before, been working with that group, and just wanted to let folks know, we have finalized our cannabis tourism panel, and our own Adrian Keys and Dana Hauser will join other experts in cannabis tourism for a panel discussion this fall, which I have the honor of facilitating. So it should be very interesting to hear how it's progressed elsewhere, how it could happen in places like ours. Nortech Board Meeting, I was able to present the Hiring Committee's proposed candidate for the Executive Director role, and also presented a resolution that sets the stage for a stronger collaboration with our service providers like the Smart Workforce Center. So these were groups that were the feet on the ground, but were not necessarily have a seat at the table, and so we've addressed that through a resolution. So I'm excited about what lies ahead for Nortech with a new Executive Director coming in and also a new culture, if you will. I participated in a peak fire briefing, and that took place, I guess it was last Friday was their first one, and people can sign up to receive information from those briefings, but it was, it was great to see the group together, and one of the things that's comforting to me is when I see the incident commander providing such positive feedback to the local folks and Cal Fire and everybody else for the great work they did before the incident command team came into place. You know, we, I think we've just heard a lot over the past about how there's differing opinions and approaches and everything else by these various firefighting teams, and I see nothing but coordination, respect, and collaboration on these, and it was encouraging to see. Unfortunately, we'll not be able to be at the meeting tonight, as I head to this evening for a Sierra Nevada Conservancy Board meeting in- as I head to this evening for a Sierra Nevada Conservancy Board Meeting in Shaver Lake, California. And we were supposed to go on a tour to see some of the sites that we've been working on, but because of the fire and the smoke there, we'll have an indoor presentation tour, followed by the board meeting the next day. So I'll be down there for a couple of days. Met with Alec Damka, who is with the UC Cooperative Extension about our Trinity County Needs Assessment. So he released our, the draft document he had put together, and I just noticed a few things that I thought maybe could be tweaked. So he and I had a chance to talk last week. And I just wanted to mention something that, that was kind of not on either my or CEO Tuttle's radar, and perhaps somebody else knows about it, or maybe this message will reach somebody. But in the Sierra Nevada Conservancy meeting, one of the people said, hey, and Rick, I just wanted to let you know I was in this meeting, and it sounded like Trinity County was the only county not participating in the coastal cleanup put on by the Coastal Commission. And my first response being uneducated about this was, well, we don't have coastline. And he said, well, no, no, this is lakes and rivers and all kinds of work, and, and all counties participate. So I did send out an email to a, a number of people that I thought might be interested. CEO Tuttle did some research. It sounds like perhaps that is usually hosted, led, if you will, by nonprofit groups within each of the counties. So I'll keep thinking about it, but any of you know, it just doesn't feel right to be the only county not participating. And I did mention, I was just out on the Trinity River cleanup. Does that count? Apparently not, if you don't do it on the day. So hopefully we'll get, get our, put in the door with that. That's my update.
Thank you. We will now move on to the consent calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters and will act, be acted upon by the board by one roll call motion. If a member of the public has any questions or comments on an item on the consent calendar, they may provide them now. A member of the board or staff may request an item be pulled and considered separately. Do we have any public comment in the room? On Zoom?
I show no raised hands.
Would anybody like to pull one?
County Council, I saw something that I thought was a, maybe just sort of a typo within the agenda minutes. Should that be pulled for discussion, or if I've already communicated, it's small typo-ish type thing?
If it's clerical, it does need to be pulled.
Okay. Would you consider that clerical, what I was commenting on? It was just a names in public comment record. Okay, so I don't see anything that I need to pull for discussion?
Could we, could we pull just, pull D eight just to discuss what that's, what those positions are, why we need them? And just to, D eight, yep, D eight, human resources. So it'd be D eight, I guess, after three.
The human resource?
Right. It's the emergency operations, just to see, just to tell us how that all works.
Can we make a motion on the rest? Heidi, go ahead.
I will make a motion on the approval of the consent calendar with the exception of pulling item D eight as requested.
I will second.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Rootweiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Brownfield?
Aye.
Okay, we will circle back around to D eight. Supervisor Brownfield.
Okay, so, so right now we're looking for positions for O E S. Is that, is that what this is about for the Operations Manager and the? Just trying to, to see, do we, you know, if we absolutely need both positions? If there's any way to save, if this is paid by the state?
I think we can hear you.
Start, start reading this in case there's someone on Zoom.
A brief explanation of, of what, of why we need these, these positions and who pays for those positions?
Should I read it so that if there's someone on Zoom that may have a question? So this is item number D eight on the agenda. It's Health and Human Services. Take the following actions in the Office of Emergency Services Division within the Health and Human Service Agency. One, approve a revised job description for Emergency Operations Manager and revise the salary range to H two oh four. Number two, approve the job description, set the salary range, and add to the alphabetical listing of classifications an Emergency Operations Coordinator at range H one eight nine. Number three, modify the allocation listing for the Emergency Service Division of Health and Human Services Agency to read one, Emergency Operations Coordinator or Emergency Operations Manager, approximate, approximate cost and salary and benefits per month. At A step for Emergency Operation Coordinator at range H one eight nine is eight thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars. And for a Emergency Operation Manager at range H two oh four is ten thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars. Liz, go right ahead.
Good morning. Thank you. Good morning, Director of Health and Human Services Agency and Emergency Services. I just jumped in. All right, Director Cassius is here, but I, um, um, this is my request to have an either or with the job classifications. Both are common within Emergency Services. I, I have observed and assessed that bringing, you know, having an opportunity to have a coordinator, more of an entry level position, to learn the scope of work and then have depth of promotion ability later in a career would be beneficial, I believe, to kind of this next. I still operate as the director. Having someone with the day to day operations is instrumental. But I, I believe your question is, was there both? And that is not the intent. It's flexibly staffed, one or the other.
Okay, great.
Happy to take any other questions about it.
That explains it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. We take a motion to approve D eight.
Move to approve as presented?
I will second.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Rootweiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Brownfield?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
We will move on to County Matters. These items include non-routine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board, staff, or public may request that an item be heard out of order. Do we have any items that would like to be heard out of order?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll go to E one, Community Development, Building. Waive the reading and enact an ordinance amending Trinity County Code Section fifteen point zero four point zero eight zero pertaining both the California Code of Regulations Title twenty-four, California Fire Code, and the California Code of Regulations Title twenty-four, California Green Building Standards Code, introduced July twenty-one, twenty-five. Cody, how are you this morning?
Pretty good. How about yourself?
I am fine.
So Cody Smith, building official. Basically, these are required by state law. So it's, we have different versions within building code for each section. So these are two sections that should have been brought in when they did the original. They weren't, so we're basically bringing those in. Just a quick, quick explanation on green code. So it is a part of the California Building Code that sets minimum environmental standards for new buildings, including things like energy efficiency, water conservation, recycling during construction, and better indoor air quality. It applies to both homes and commercial buildings, and it's updated every three years. The goal is to reduce the environmental impact of construction while improving health and safety for the public. And then fire code, I, I think we can all agree, we understand what fire code is. It's got different requirements in terms of materials, setbacks, occupancies, all those kind of things. So this would basically just be getting us where we need to be in terms of having all of those codes adopted into that one section.
Thank you, Cody. Does the board have any question? Do you have any comments in the room or Zoom?
I show no raised hands.
Take a motion on E one.
I will make a motion to approve E one as presented.
I will second.
Supervisor Rootweiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Brownfield?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye. E two, Grand Jury. Approve a budget, budget adjustment for year twenty-four, twenty-five for Grand Jury, Department two oh five oh, increasing services and supplies by two thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And approve a budget adjustment for two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five for General Fund contingency, Department ninety, ninety-nine, zero, one, decreasing provisions for contingency by two thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Do we have any public comment on Zoom?
I show no raised hands.
In room? CEO Tuttle?
Chair, this is just to cover some Grand Jury expenses. As the staff report indicated, depending upon where Grand Jury members actually reside and come from, sometimes there are different travel expenses for them to come to meetings. And then based upon what they're investigating, there are different travel expenses. So this is simply to cover their actual cost for the fourth quarter of twenty-four, twenty-five. We have had discussions with the, the courts and the Grand Jury Chairman to ask them to improve coordination on their expenses so we can stay within their budget or do budget adjustments prior to expenditures being incurred. So we'll try to continue that dialogue and conversation as different grand juries start each year.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? I will make a motion to approve of E two.
I will second.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Rootweiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Brownfield?
Aye.
E three, Board. Receive an update presentation from the County Ministerial Office on the Trinity County twenty, twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-nine Strategic Plan.
Thank you, Chair. So I'm gonna, as Shan is bringing up the actual document that was part of the staff report, I'll quickly just kind of re-cage where we're at as far as the strategic plan. So the board adopted the strategic plan in January of twenty twenty-four. It is a five-year plan, so we're about, you know, eighteen, nineteen months into it. There has been a couple of updates on different sections, on different lines of effort, on different key results. This is going to kind of be a holistic overview. My intent is not to dive into each one of them in excruciating detail. But if we want to, you know, at a later date, and that's what the board wants, happy to do that. We're happy to go into as much as, as we want here. Just as a reminder, there's five main lines of effort or five very high level strategic goals. And then we have a number of objectives underneath those. And then there's fifty-one key results that we are focusing efforts on for the, this five-year effort. As you can see, I don't know if she got that up yet. So if you can go to, just scroll through a couple of pages. Keep going, keep going, keep going. This is all common. You guys have seen all this stuff before. Keep going. So right here, so right there, you can see overall, we're at twenty-nine percent. You can see a little bit of variation in the different lines of effort there. Most of that is for reporting purposes. You know, I don't go into this thing, or we don't go into this thing daily. You know, it's kind of done on a quarterly basis, and then there's some adjustments made as far as once the initial input is put in there, then it, then I kind of do a review of it. And if I want to adjust it up or down, as far as, you know, are we really that complete? Are we really not? You know, there's a little bit of fluctuation there. So that's why you see some, some adjustments up and down there. And then, you know, we're, we're not at a, at a point in this strategic plan either where everything is, is based upon absolutely, you know, objective like data. There's some of this that is subjective as far as kind of where we're at, the percentage complete. So there's definitely still some subjectivity in that. As we go on over time, you know, the goals are to make it more objective, but we're not, we're not quite there yet. And then the, the platform that we're doing this in is the same platform that we run our, our budget development in. And there is a desire to link in a more direct relationship, the strategic plan to the budget. But again, that's a, a little bit longer term goal. You'll see this year in some of the budget memos coming to you from the, the department heads, a linkage to the strategic plan, you know, their objectives, the lines of effort, the key results. And you'll see some of that in the, in the budget memos, which I'm very pleased to see our progress towards that direction and just overall understanding and working towards a strategic plan from a county level. There's been different departments and different divisions within departments before that have run and run very successful and strong strategic plans, but it's been at a lower level. So we're trying to bring that up to the full countywide level. Okay, if you can scroll down. So here kind of gives an overall percentage complete of the different lines of effort. And my apologies, I have not found images and appropriately done the admin and fluff this up. But, you know, when I get some time, maybe I'll, I'll do that. But I, I got the guts here for you. So we're, we'll, we'll work on the, on the fluff part of it. But that's where we stand overall. Okay, so if you can go down Shan to, go one more, please. It's right here. So if you look at this, the, the yellow highlighted area there is what the board had previously identified as a calendar year twenty-five priority. So as we go through each one of these, I've highlighted that key result, which the board had previously identified as a, as a priority. I didn't intend today to get us into the discussion of, do we want to adjust those priorities? Do you want to keep them the same? We can certainly do that. I mean, if it's as simple as, yeah, pretty much, let's keep them the same. I'm good with that. If we want to get into more of a detailed discussion, we probably want to bring another item back to the board and, you know, specifically tee us up for that, that type of discussion. But, so the develop a, a community, a healthy community strategy. You know, a lot of this falls under Liz and her H H S A agency team. But, you know, for your awareness, I mean, Public Health has been leading efforts for quite some time here. You've seen the equity assessment. You've seen their strategic plan in this forum. You know, and they've made lots of, of good progress here. There's things like, you know, the community oral health, the disaster medical supply units for mass casualty events, the maternal child adolescent health partnership with Shasta and Humboldt. You know, and public health is in, in, in effect, starting to use the same platform for their strategic planning. So to me, that's really exciting because all of these things will begin to link together even more and more once we get into this. So, you know, you see a thirty-five percent progress there. That's for some of those things I mentioned. But in addition to that, you know, we, the jail health efforts are part of that overall healthy community strategy. And that's been a big effort too, that we've been focused on this, this last year or so. So lots of progress to be still had on this and, and needed on this. But I, I think we are moving in, in the right direction on this one. And that's why the status is on track. Supervisor Rootweiler had kind of some questions as far as the, the status there. So the, the platform allows six categories. Either not started, future, on track, minor disruption, major disruption, or complete. So, you know, we are kind of uh, limited to to what we can do there and and maybe some of these, you know, I pretty much have them all as either on track or complete. And maybe some of these that we really haven't started yet, you know, you could even put on as a minor disruption maybe or something like that. But again, just in the implementation, early stages of this, we're just trying to to get things going, to get staff engaged aware, get the department heads aware. Of of what this is, how how you work a strategic plan. So I'm not overly concerned about the mechanics of 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 some of it. But I do want us to continue the the progress and continue continue using the platform to the best of our ability, because I think it is a pretty good platform. The the other ones there, you know, there there is progress being made, I I won't go through and hit on all these unless the board has questions. So I I will hit on the ones that are highlighted that the board had questions or had a priority for twenty five, but unless there's questions on the other ones, we're just going to kind of keep going through. So if you could move down Shan to the objective two there. Okay, on on this page, uh, so.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And can you enlarge that, just hit the plus button a little bit? Thank you. Old eyes.
Perfect. So develop a strategy to provide access to prompt nine one one services and outline areas. So this is as much, you know, as far as desire goes. I know staff and especially the sheriff and sheriff's department without speaking for the sheriff, but I know. You know, all of our desires is to make our response times to everywhere in the county much, much better. But it's really, you know, dependent upon resources and and funding levels, and as you know, last year, we had to make some pretty significant cuts. This year, as we're we're getting closer to being able to provide the proposed uh, budget publicly on the eighth. You know, we are in a better position than we were last year, we're going to be able to to provide uh, some more funds to the sheriff's office and specifically. The patrol side. So that will enhance those abilities. You know, there's been some some very preliminary, just kind of uh, back of a napkin type discussions about, you know, the rural deputy program again. Which is, which has taken place in this county and in other areas before. So those type of concepts are what can be, could be continually to be flushed out under under this type of effort. And will continue to be. But a lot of those, again, is going to be strictly resource dependent uh, on setting some of those type of programs up. But we will continue to focus on that. Uh, item number two there, uh, publish the overall county. Road repair plan on uh, DOT website to include routine annual maintenance plan and multiple year. Major storm damage repair plan. So some progress has been made there, the overall uh, maintenance plan and snow road removal plan is on the county webpage under DOT. The different categories are set up there, there's pretty good explanation of that. So that I I I do feel good, we we have made some some progress there. You know, there has been lots of discussion in here uh, about road maintenance uh, throughout the county, and we very much appreciate that. There is, you know, just realities of it are, there are funding constraints associated with it. You know, it was brought up today about, you know, the the FEMA funds, uh, well, guess what, you know, we didn't get those FEMA funds. You know, there are other areas where we've been promised funding for uh, road damage that was caused during. Natural disaster, mainly fire repair, uh, fire areas. We're grateful that the fire crews go in and and do what they do, um, but sometimes there's quite a bit of damage that's caused. And oftentimes those uh, those promises uh, or those statements made by folks on the ground. Unless it's coming from the right people in those organizations and there's actually funding to back that up, it it just doesn't come. You know, and the FEMA process to get reimbursement for any of these storm damage. Repair projects is extremely excruciating and long and painful and detailed. And then there's also some questions, you know, as far as, well, you know, why do you spend, you know, two point one million dollars on a specific project? Well, that's what we're getting reimbursed for. So you either do that project and get reimbursed two point one million dollars, or you don't do the project and you don't get the two point one million dollars. So it's not like we get that two point one million dollars and then just decide whatever we want to do in the whole county uh, for roads, we spend it on. No, it's very dedicated to that very specific project that was designed, put in for that specific area. So uh, that all goes towards the multi-year major storm damage repair plan. There is a very complicated. Uh, spreadsheet that uh, DOT has together. It is, it it's, there's no value uh, to put it on the webpage and make it public. One, because uh, it is continually changing and two, because there's so much data in there. That it becomes useless unless you're an engineer like Andy and knows what it actually means and deals with the. The state and federal funding folks all the time, because that's the level of effort that they want, but we're working towards simplifying a plan. So it's meaningful and it is appropriate uh, for the communities to understand what is out there. But the scope and breadth of the the major storm damage is significant. So we'll keep working on that, uh, and that's why, you know, we've got a lot of room uh, to continue and moving on this particular item.
See, O'Toole, just a question, I know I spent some time with Pano's. In the past and uh, when I was going through a lot of the what about our roads, all the kind of stuff and and they had a spreadsheet that was fairly overwhelming. Of all of the requests that come in through the website and otherwise and so forth. And uh, I know, I remember at the time, I was hoping for, oh, well, can't we get some information that says by district, how many? How many requests have we had and what are the ages of them and all this other stuff? And basically it was, well, yeah, if we had more people to manage spreadsheets, but uh, are are we any further there to our, does maybe our? I know we've been looking at systems, would one of the systems, if we choose to go, make that easier to give that kind of data to the public?
I mean, the the short answer is no. Is there a system, could you do it? Yeah, does it take resources? Yeah, I mean, do we want to, you you know, spend admin's time uh, coming up with a a spreadsheet and a methodology to say? Hey, here's the percentage of projects or the percentage of of complaints in each district and this is what we're doing, I mean, could, can that happen? Sure, it's a matter of priorities, uh, my opinion, uh, it it it's probably not the best. Use of our time to add admin cost, I'd rather add. Road crew cost, time, people, you know, if if we're going to have the money to do that.
And so, and sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, but so really this, we're still stuck in that. That's the tool we have, and so it is just throwing labor at it, and then as you say, is that really the best use of labor when the more road crew could be more, lots of things. So, okay, I just wanted to see if we.
You know, I mean, I'd love to hire another engineer to uh, to help get through some of this stuff a little faster, you know, we do have some consultants on board and that kind of stuff. But it's, again, it's 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 resource constraint, I mean, it is, it is what it is.
Well, and for the public's benefit, I I mean, I did spend some time with them and and it was, like I said, somewhat overwhelming when you just see the breadth of it, it's just all these. Concerns coming in, and so they have to look at those, and then they work with the road crews and figure out what they can get to while they're working on this, but then they're also looking at the bigger projects and does this require? Engineering, or can this just be done this way, and and so it is uh, very complex. And being managed in a very old system. So um, I I'm still hopeful at some point that we will either with the. Benefits of artificial intelligence or with a new platform someday be in a position where that. Isn't so cumbersome and that information can be not only available to us and the public better, but also for the people doing the work better. Because it's, it's still very much reliant on people talking to each other using a spreadsheet, which is, it's just ugly.
It 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 is, it is ugly, uh, we are looking at, and this is, I was going to hit on this when we get to like the business license piece way at the end. We are looking at a couple of different platforms, you have seen in this board. The Acela platform for our cannabis licenses and and tax collection piece, and we're moving that along, we've definitely, you know, there are some. Significant growing pains uh, with that effort and bringing that online and, you know, what a. What a company promises you in a uh, sales pitch, you know, in that phase of a project versus what actually happens when you get. Coding technicians on board and trying to form what we have towards what we want. Is it is a challenge, and we've been working through that. There's also some other platforms out there, and we've done some recent demos with, we currently use a platform called SmartGov. There's other platforms out there, and we've had some good demos with some newer platforms that are. More focused on jurisdictions our size. And versus like some of the larger jurisdictions. And. These seem fairly promising, uh, and it would be inclusive of. Permitting, so. You know, potentially encroachment permits, uh, DG permits, uh, billing permits, you know, well permits. Permit for, you know, running a food operation permit, you know, all those types of permits would be. Inclusive in this, as would like, you know, code enforcement, as would. The all aspects environmental health and the compliance aspect of that. As would our our planning efforts, so. There are, it it's not something that's going to happen quickly, though, uh, if we decide to go that path, we're looking at some things, we may have a little bit of budget room to do that. This year, so it may be the right time to do it, we'll we'll see how that discussion goes uh, through September. And then as we get into October, November, we'll we'll see if we'll move in that direction. But there'll be at, there will need to be a transition, you know, from our current platform, which is a little bit more expensive, not quite as user friendly, not quite as productive. But there will be a an overlap and a transition time if 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 we decide to go that direction uh, as a county, so more to come on that.
Thank you.
If we could, just Shan, if you could roll through, again, if there's any questions on these other things, please, please let me know, but if you could roll through to the next section. That's highlighted there, should be. Yep. So. With this one. Sorry, go, let's see. So for this one, uh, really, the key result one there. Two and three are all very similar with this one, and this is uh, board activity. Board participation in our organizations like RCRC, NACO, CSAC. How we interact with state and local officials, you know, how we interact with our uh, assembly members, how we interact with our state. Officials. As far as policy goes, how we interact with our federal officials. I think we've made some good progress here, uh, I think the board has uh, been very consistent on, you know, who the representatives are. We've seen some movement uh, with like, you know, CSAC and a recent visit from the CSAC president coming up here. We've had, you know, visits from Assemblyman Rogers, you know, and his staff, we've had, you know, Senator McGuire and his staff. You know, we have them really on on speed dial, you know, and they're very very supportive of us, they've given us this county, you know, significant amounts of money. So I think we've made some good progress there. The the one area, you know, that that is lacking here, in my opinion, is kind of that. Person or the coordinated effort as far as. How does the board as a whole, as a collective during each year of that person's, that that chairman's time? How how do they want to move forward in this direction and have that interaction with with staff? When we go, you know, to an RCRC event, to a CSAC event. You know, right now, I would say it's a little more ad hoc, uh, we we do it, uh, and it works, uh, but it's a little more ad hoc. So this could be an area, again, if there's desire and consensus from the from the board to do this, but it'll take some time uh, to do. There's not a big staff out there to to make this work, so it's. It's us. You know, working that together, uh, and there's definitely willingness to do that. As we move forward, so that would could be an area, uh, you know, if there's interest in doing something like that. That I'd certainly be open to that and as would as would staff.
You know, one thing that comes to mind, because I'm I'm. Guilty of keeping it somewhat ad hoc with the CSAC, you know, the CSAC meetings coming up and kind of as I'm getting ready to go, I look at the agenda and then I'm suddenly I'm reaching out to. Liz and saying, oh, what can you tell me about this and what do I need to take into this discussion? So I don't know if it would be a board item or if it would just be the board member and staff, but maybe. Weeks before those functions, we host something where we actually dig in a little bit and say, what do we need to take? From Trinity County into that RCRC, CSAC, NACO. You know, so on and so forth meeting, uh, because I know I've been much more sporadic than I should be for that.
And 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 staff is open to that, uh, and, you know, depending upon who the the board rep is for those main organizations, that may be a good. Process we just develop is, hey, once, once the agenda comes out for that item, you you know what what's going to be talked. Then we just get with the 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 relevant staff members who would be able to provide you. The information as far as, hey, this is what staff's doing, these are the touch points, these are the pain points. That the the policy or the procedure or, you know, whatever's being developed by the state or that organization. You know, we could have that dialogue, so so you're better prepared when you go and have discussions. With the other county supervisors, and as that collective voice is is being created and that message is being creative. You know, staff is is very open to an idea like that or a concept like that.
And I I do think that. Prior to the last couple of years, RCRC, NACO, CSAC. You know, we we weren't. Given guidance on what we should do there and what we should bring back from there. We attended, um, sat through some, you know, enlightening presentations. But it's it's the same with the NCRP with myself and and Heidi. That. I think it's important, I've seen all three of these, NACO, RCRC, and CSAC. Finally step up and not just be a guy or gal going to a meeting. But, you know, making headway. Getting the right questions asked, asking the right people, making connections with the right people. So, you know, I'd like to just say thanks to all three of NACO, CSAC, and RCRC. For us finally getting like a a goal going when we go to those meetings. Never in the past did we really have anything but uh. Lunch there, I don't think, you know, so.
Well, I I feel the engagement, you know, from from our county and really the rural counties has been much the. Much better and the voices have been heard, you know, I mean. Even like when when Supervisor Carpenter Harris goes to NACO, I mean, we put together some specific white papers and some specific documents that they. Then took forward to the, you know. Federal level congressional staffers and congressional members themselves and laid it on their desk and talked about issues. And I think that's that's beneficial.
It is, I it it has been, I can see the results of that just in communication and. Then when you return to those same caucuses, they say. Trinity County talked about this last time, we want to, you know, you can feel the momentum begin to build and conglomerates are formed on on similar topics, so it is very helpful.
Yeah, we've even seen some of that for NCRP where. We are both, myself and Heidi are two ad hocks there because. You know, we didn't just go for lunch, you know, we participated, they liked our participation. And are now actually going to pay for our participation there.
Yeah.
So um, we'll say all four of those things are NACO, RCRC, CSAC, and NCRP. We're going with a mission and we're coming home with an answer, hopefully. Some of our problems and see what the problems are in comparative counties around California and in some cases, uh, the country. So I I think this is the first time, the first couple of years that we've really been. Fully engaged in 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 these, you know, four committees and. I think we're making good strides there and I would hope that uh. Everybody would want to stick around next year and continue on those boards just for continuity.
Yeah, okay, so I think we'll we'll keep going in that direction and I would encourage uh, each of the the members, you know, that few weeks, as soon as you get that agenda. You know, to reach out to staff and and we'll have that dialogue and try to prep you as much as we can uh, as you go to those events. All right, Shan, let's go down to the next area there. So in this area, uh, the key result that's highlighted, you know, we, I I think we've made some good progress here, uh, so. You you are all aware of the the PIO efforts we have. That's that's. So, you, you are all aware of the, the PIO efforts we have, that's, that's been a, a big improvement and help. The webpage, it was updated back in December of 2024, that was a big improvement and we've been able to utilize that a lot more. There's still lots of functionalities there that we're exploring and developing and there are groups that are together that are focused on that now. You know, we have a social media platform now, you know, the county has, you know, Facebook, Instagram accounts and items are being published there. You know, our numbers are not significant, you know, but they're continually growing. We're, we're getting, you know, over 200, heading towards 300. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's better than what it was, it certainly could be, could be better, but we're moving in the right direction there. We're releasing a lot of press releases on different topics, trying to get ahead, ahead of those. We have the monthly, the county monthly newsletter that's going out, I think that's been refined and that's getting better. There's a community tied to that now, you know, as an example, this, this last month, you know, we linked in with TCOE, kind of a back to school theme and, and highlighting them, you know, we're, we're looking at, you know, kind of the, the arts and culture, if you will, next, you know, in September, you've got, you know, some arts and culture type stuff going on, highlighting some of the stuff in there. It's not like county staff type stuff, but it's, it's, it's countywide and we're trying to incorporate that into this area and that, and that's what that key result is, is trying to get at. So I think we're making some progress there and, you know, I think 35% is probably pretty, pretty appropriate for where we're at right now. Okay.
Board, have any questions?
Under growth and development, we've got this one here. So, this one, you know, I'd say there's pretty minimal progress that's been made on this one, there's, there's minimal staff, one, to, to do anything with this. But there, you know, there's definitely some linkages with some local nonprofits that have been trying to step up into this space and, and, and make some, make some progress. While, while there's pretty engaged with that and aware of that from the economic development aspect, you know, there, there are some forums that we are, you know, recently just pushed in, pushed a document to, an economic development type of a forum, presentation, that, you know, kind of a success story, if, if you will, of, of the cannabis program here, going from, you know, no licenses a couple of years ago, we're upwards of three, in the 330 range right now. So, just, just some of that. So it's, it's, it's movement in the right direction. I kind of view this under the community development director position. As you saw on today's agenda, we're, we're going to revise that job description a little bit and I don't, I wouldn't have expected you to find those details in there, but if you did, good on you. You know, there, there was some direct verbiage in there about economic development and that position would be responsible for some of that.
Proper planning.
Proper planning, it absolutely does it. So it's really just the foundation of that. So that's why we're going to try to continually move in, in that direction and, and trying to, you know, find that right person to, to fit in that and, and help us move, move along. But, you know, we, we haven't made a whole lot of movement from a county perspective with that. Most counties have like a, a nonprofit that runs this and, and maybe with one county staff and then that county staff works a lot with the nonprofit. So I would say we're at the infancy stages of that and we'll just kind of see where that goes, but continually keep it as a, as a, as a focus item. I think it's got value, you know, I think it's a good thing we, we collectively need to look at holistically from the county, not just focus on, you know, one or two things, but look at all different facets of, of potential economic development and not just look one or two years down the road, you know, we're in the throes of this general plan, which is another item on here a little bit later, but, you know, those are decades we're talking about. So we, we got to keep the right sight picture in mind as well.
And I would just acknowledge that I think, you know, Drew and Terry both stepping up to participate in the tourism advisory board and, and with the recommendations regarding TOT related funding is a key, the, the board's approval of the funds for Civitas Advisors to try to get this tourism thing going, which we're, we're still working toward. I, I think we are making baby steps and I'm glad that, you know, the strategic plan isn't about put it on here because it's easy and we can report progress, it's what is most important for us to do. And then this was even highlighted amongst those. And we have put some little time and effort, money to it, but this just keeps it in front of us, which I think is valuable and hopefully we'll keep building.
Yep, keep moving in the right direction. Okay, Shan, let's move down to the next set there. So, so the, I just kind of hit on the general plan a little bit, you know, we are making good progress there, ton of work still to do, lots of big, big muscle movements, but, you know, we've made some good progress there. The housing element, so I could bump that up, you know, now to 100% complete. So, huge, huge effort there and, and real happy about that. Some of the other ones below that, you know, we are making good progress on those, like the subdivision review committee has been established, it is in place, you know, we need to point out new planning commissioner to chair that and get that going, but it, it is there. So good progress on, on all those areas underneath this objective from, from my perspective. Okay, on to the next one. The TOT funds were just referenced a little bit, you know, we're working through those, we got an ad hoc established to do the, the proposed distribution of those. What you'll see in the proposed budget on the eighth is $70,000 proposed to distribute to those organizations. Again, that's, you know, purely board discretionary money of how that's distributed, but that's what we're proposing. The revitalization strategy there, I would say that is, I don't know, stalled a little bit or minimal work being done on it. I mean, there is, there has been some, a plan, if you will, some items put together, but as far as any implementation and really doing a whole lot with it, it's more on the, in the PowerPoint phases and in the, in the development phases and actually doing much with it. So that's why we're only at 10% there. Item three there, Supervisor Luke Wiler had, had a question about that earlier on, you know, the Airbnb and VRBO. So, you know, our, our treasurer tax collector has some software now and, you know, we are much more aware of, of those organizations that are out there. Both Airbnb and VRBO are not the easiest companies to work with as far as getting data from and working all of the details, especially in some of the larger counties, but we are, you know, working that arena and, and we know what we should be collecting, which is a big step in the right direction. We know what we are collecting, we know what the gap is now. So now it's, you know, how do you go about an education process to start with, to make sure that people are aware, if you are going to do this, kind of what, what your commitments are from a business perspective. So we're working through that. The, you know, and as Supervisor Luke Wiler mentioned, you know, the, the, the TBIT effort is ongoing, so the item number four there, as far as a TOT increase, you know, we're just, that's kind of not been addressed much until the decision is made on what's going to happen with the investment district. But efforts are ongoing there. Okay, over to the next set there. So, item one there, you know, is on the cannabis license program. Like I said earlier, you know, we're in the 330 range for, for licenses. So, solid movement there, Director Bubani's done a great job there and really moved us along. So real happy with where we're at there. Still, you know, items we need to work, obviously, as we develop and finalize the, the zoning update, there'll be some items that'll be shored up in there and hopefully eliminate some of his day-to-day headaches that he deals with. But, you know, it's, it's, there's always going to be work to be done there, but we are moving in the right direction there. And then the item number two there, you know, I, I think we are keeping the, the public fairly well informed, there's tons of stuff out there on the, on their webpage as far as the equity program and how that's worked, there's many, many individuals and, and businesses that have taken advantage of those. So I, I think we're making some, some decent progress there and like I mentioned, you know, the overall zoning code update will address some of those items as far as the, the regulations and policies in that key result.
And I, I would just offer too there, it was interesting for the same economic summit where we'll have the cannabis tourism panel, each county was asked to provide a success story. And so I put a message out and asked a bunch of people, well, what success story? And, you know, it was crickets. And so, in the end, what we came together with was a story about our cannabis program. And we were careful to position, in fact, I worked with Adrian Keyes to try to fine tune Drew and Adrian and I on the language because I don't know that anybody would jump for joy and say, we did this really, really well, but a success story from the standpoint of three or four years ago, we were at a standstill and today we have over 330 active participants. We have obtained and distributed millions of dollars in equity grant, we're getting now over $350,000, I think it is, in cannabis taxes that can go to various things for the county. So, I, I just want to point out that there, there's always a lot of debate about how much cannabis is going to do or has done or is doing for the county. But it was interesting to me that when I tried to get a success story to share at the economic summit, that's where we landed. So, let's, let's give it some credit and let's continue to look towards how we can, you know, build our economy in all kinds of different ways.
I concur. All right, Shan, let's keep moving. Under the good neighbor authority there, you know, we, we have used the good neighbor authority, we have been using a couple of the supplemental project agreements, you know, DOT is, is working active projects with the Forest Service. You'll see an item next board meeting that's for some hazardous tree removals, you know, and that's going to be under the good neighbor authority. So, you know, we've been using some of that authority for roadside maintenance and it's been a good, good effort. And the Forest Service has been a very good partner in the good neighbor authority and very happy with the progress we've, we've made there. The two and two there, you know, some minimal progress has been made there, you know, funding is, is the biggest challenge. You guys are well aware of the funding challenges we've had with the, within the, the natural resources arena as far as the personnel are, are concerned the last year. Hopefully we'll, we're beyond that now, but we still have some resource issues to work with. Item number three there, I think we are being well represented in the overall reconsultation progress for the Central Valley project. You know, we, we, county put forth a very specific proposal, that proposal is going through the US Bureau of Recruitment Evaluation process, so I'm very happy with that. And, you know, we'll just kind of see where that ends up. It's a very complicated, very bureaucratic process, but we are playing in it and we're working through it and we'll, we'll see where it, where it all ends up and, and what we need further input and, and comments on, but I think we're, we're positioned fairly well there. Okay, let's move on to the next area. It's kind of getting into more of our HR arena as far as staffing and training and succession planning. You know, Leila's been working a lot of this with, with departments, I think we've made some progress here. Our recruitment and fill rates are actually pretty good, we're, we're doing better there. We're, we're getting many more people on our hire list than we were a couple of years ago. Some of that, I think, is a, is an offshoot of society as a whole. You know, we're, we're well out of, you know, the, the 21, 2021 and late 20, late, early 22 time period where there was definitely effects of COVID and job market and all that kind of stuff. So, happy to see, you know, the number of applicants we're getting and the quality of applicants we're getting for most of our positions, not all of them, but most of the positions. You know, some of the entry level positions are, are still a little rough as far as the, the applicant pool we're getting, but for the, for the mid-level and upper level positions, we're, we're getting some pretty good, pretty good candidates there. For number two there, the close loop process for fines and, and that, you know, we kind of touched upon that a, a little bit earlier, you know, in addition to what I commented on earlier, you know, we do have a collections agency that's on board, you know, the, that the board knew about that, you know, we, we brought that contract forward to the board a while ago. You know, there hasn't been a whole lot of return on that, honestly. We've sent about $2 million of collections to them, we've got about $14,000 in return on that, but it's no cost to us. I mean, we're just, we're, we, you know, they get 17%, we get the other percent. So it's not like we're paying them out of general fund or any other money to do this, they're just taking a percentage of whatever that outstanding fine or fee is. So, you know, we're, we're working with them, there's probably some things we can, we, we can refine a little bit with them as far as methodology, but we have seen a, a number of fines being just paid because of a collections agency going and knocking on, you know, pre-bill knocking on people's door, not literally, but just, you know, the phone calls and that kind of stuff. And then the, you know, the reduction of, or the, the change in the policy of, of reducing the fees no longer to 50% for NOVs, you know, that has increased the, the fees that have been collected. So, and just in the recent last, just as examples, the last, over the last two months, I've had two different individ, three different individuals come in now and talk about, you know, is there any way we can reduce my fine or fee before, you know, we can get another license and, you know, based upon the direction from the board, no, you're going to pay your fine or fee and then we'll be happy to give you your license. And coincidentally, before that license is to expire, those fines and fees have been paid and we have, you know, we've been making some progress there. So in my opinion, it's, it's moving in the right direction. Obviously not everybody's opinion's the same, but in my opinion, we're moving in the right direction there. As far as the numbers of outs, the numbers of outstanding fines, just kind of a, for understanding of the last few years, so in 2021, there was 40, 2022, there was 34, 2023, there was 36, 2024, there was 22, as of 2025, there's, there's nine. So, you can see we're fairly steady as far as those, those individuals that choose to not come in compliance and go the fine route. So, in my mind, it's a business decision, what people are going to do. They're going to choose and they're going to, you know, go, go in that direction. So, we'll, we'll see what 2025 ends up at, probably similar to 2024, I would imagine, based upon the current number, you know, a little more than halfway through, we're right at, at nine, so maybe a little lower than 2024. So we'll, we'll see where that goes. All righty, keep moving Shan. Let's go down to the, let's see, we're in the last area there, yep. So this was the business license, you know, there's, this topic has been thrown around, I know with the staff and in this room a little bit. You know, staff is definitely supportive of a business license concept. It, it has pros and cons, we're one of the few, if only jurisdictions that doesn't have a business license requirement. Usually it's a fairly nominal fee, but it provides a lot of data and when disasters do happen, it provides a lot better platform for those who are affected to go through the county, back to whatever state or federal organization is asking for that data to provide whatever programs they're going to provide for those affected businesses. Right now, it's totally done ad hoc, very, very little, you know, that, that we have some data, but it's certainly not comprehensive when we, and we've experienced that during disasters. So, depending upon what the direction and desires are from the board in the future, we'll determine, you know, some progress on, on this particular area as far as business licenses. But as I did say, there are some platforms out there that would help us in the administrative part of it, because it would be like some of the other permitting that we would go on. because it would be like some of the other permitting that we would go on. It's another module that we would use on the same platform. Number two there, the technology infrastructure of social media. I do think we've made some good progress there. That kind of dovetails in a little bit with the other item that I talked on with PIO. Then, you know, we have a new IT director that you're all aware of and Dan's doing a great job and making some headway with IT infrastructure improvements. You know, we are moving towards the Office 365 subscriptions, which is going to allow a lot more collaboration amongst staff. They've recently moved the prior behavioral health department. All that staff was on a whole separate server, whole separate domain, really a separate domain, if you will. And there was very little communication between systems amongst staff as that's been absorbed into HHSA now. That big effort just completed a few weeks ago and now staff have much more collaboration as far as calendaring, sharing information, sharing documents, you know, that has made a huge difference. But that was a, that was a big, big effort. We're also working a lot of the more infrastructure piece of things with some of these funding sources with Patch AI. If there's any type of link to that, we can upgrade some servers, upgrade some capacity in the cloud environment, which is all needed. So Dan's doing a great job there. Lots of challenges, lots of room in the future for work, but good effort there. There's also been some desires at the staff level for some lean Six Sigma-type training, you know, continuous process improvement-type training. People looking, you know, to do a project under a green belt and then kind of share that information amongst staff and continue doing that from a process improvement. So we've looked at some training sources there. A lot of it's just timing, you know, but it's great to see that desire there and willingness to embrace some of those concepts because I do think we are ripe for some process improvement in a few areas, from my opinion. But we'll keep working that, so.
One comment back on the business license, just so the rest of the board is aware. In doing work on the tourism part, I ran into an organization that actually has a service where they will implement this sort of registration licensing for you. So when CEO Tuttle and I have spoken about this before, it was, well, do we have the systems? Do we have the staff? It's a lot of administration. And in this case, you pay them that small fee and they do all the work. And they store it in their own system, but we have all the access. And so they get information about the type of business. Do they store chemicals? Do, all the kinds of things that could come in handy, whether it's in emergencies or even to the point where someone says they want to start up a business. And when we know that they're starting up a business and where and what kind, then we can point them to all the right code and regulations so that we don't have these things where people are up here, public comment, complaining that I had to shut down my business because you made me do things. Well, if you'd come to us first, you would have known what you had to do first, but we didn't know you were doing it because we don't require this. So it's a circular thing that I hope that we can solve and this could be a way forward. CEO Tuttle and Terry McBrayer and I are in my court. I've got to schedule a meeting for us to hear from that person about that platform and see if it's something that we bring back to the board as one way of reaching this solution. So, thank you.
So that's the overall update for right now. I wanted to provide this prior to budget hearings. So one, you would have this document to reference if you wanted to. But just also to have a little bit of an understanding and appreciation for the progress we have made on this and for those focus areas. So as we look at the proposed budget here in a few weeks, you know, if there's adjustments that want to be made, I would just ask that, you know, we collectively continue to remember, you know, the strategic plan and some of those priorities that we did put in place and some of the longer-term efforts that we have in front of us so we can keep making some progress on this effort. But I think we're in a good position and making some good progress based upon, you know, being about 18, 19 months into a five-year plan.
May I address?
Go ahead.
I just want to say one of the things that caused me to have excitement is your comment that the staff is becoming more engaged and the department heads are leaning into this process and communicating amongst themselves, that opportunity to grow that is very good. And I'm grateful to see that. It seemed like, especially when I first got on the board, that so many of the departments were silos in and among themselves. And to hear that the teams are growing together and as one is, makes me happy. So thank you for the work and leadership that it took to create that environment for that to grow and flourish. And our HR.
Do we have any other questions from the board? Public comment in the room?
Oh, per closed session, you mean?
No, for this last hour.
Oh.
Zoom?
I show no raised hands.
Oh, yes, no, closed session. We will move into closed session. I will report out from the August 19th meeting. Government Code Section 54954.5, direction was given to staff. F2, Government Code Section 54954.5C, direction was given to staff. F3, Department, Government Code Section 54954-5F, direction was given to staff. We will now move into closed sessions. Are there any comments on? F1.
Read it first. Yeah, I think you have to read it before public comment.
Right, F1 will be government code, F4954.5F, labor negotiations. Margaret Long, excuse me. Leila, Susie Hawkins, and Amanda, I guess it would be. Employee organizations, Deputy Sheriff's Association, General Unit Management and Confidential Unit and Skilled Trades Unit. Do we have any public comment? On Zoom?
I show no raised hands.
We are now adjourned.